How are you, darling?
Pretty good. How's everybody?
You didn't want, you didn't want to come out in the cold, eh?
You know, I still can't put my left sock on.
There, I, I, I feel your pain. Yes.
I, I can do almost everything else I need to, to get by in life, except put on my left sock and shoe.
Yeah, that is hysterical. Not, I mean, not that, you know, it'll, it'll get the, yeah. It's, it's a long way down.
I mean, if it was, if it were summer, I'd probably just, you know, slip into a, a slide or something and, and come on down, but.
Not today.
I need a warm socks. Yeah.
His toes would be, uh, purple. Yeah.
How are you doing, Al?
I'm really well. I was just saying to LaShawn, it's just, um, I, I've, I have overcome the sock thing. That's, that was a good thing. And, um, the, I actually, the PT was ready to discharge me. And I said, oh, can't I come back just once more? But, cause she keeps me honest. That's, I think.
Well, yeah, there's accountability and they'll push you a little harder than you, you sometimes think you're able to go on your own. I had my first outpatient PT two days ago. Um, and that was good because he, he takes you up to another level, you know? I've been doing my work on my own in the gym here, but they can, they can, they can make you go a little further than you think you can.
Oh, yeah. Cause they know what's not going to break.
Well, yeah, they, they know you're not going to tear it open or something.
Yeah. Who, um, where do you go?
The South Side Sports Medicine.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, there's a place around the corner. Well, it's, it's near the old Whole Foods and they're really, really good. Wow. So. But, all right, oh, we've got to go. It's nine o'clock. It's, or it's eight fifty-nine. Are you gonna give me a laptop or no?
It's charging. I'll, I'll get it to you for the.
Okay, yeah, not, not worry. All right. Let's go live here. All right. Good morning, everybody. This is the time and place set for the last set of zoning hearings for 2025 on December 11th, 2025. And the first case of the morning is zone case one forty-seven of 2025. Uh, Ryan England, are you with us? We have Mr. England.
I am here.
Okay. Ryan, are you the, um, only person who's testifying in this matter?
I am. I don't have an option for video. I'm not sure why.
Well, we'll get the, if you figure that out and we'll get you sworn in first. Uh, do you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is on case one forty-seven of 2025 for seven oh eight Jacksonia Street, the applications for the renovation of an existing structure for ground floor retail with one residential unit above, and they're requesting a special exception pursuant to section nine twenty-one dot O two dot A dot four to allow the change of the non-conforming use.
Alrighty, so we'll pull up your materials. Can you explain where the property is and how it had been previously used?
Yeah. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for your time this morning. This is seven oh six, seven oh eight Jacksonia Street, um, which is in the war streets. The, this board has heard this before about five or six years ago, and that decision expired. Um, Daniel, if you can just go to the next slide. Here's our posted notice. Just keep going. And so this is a little bit of context in the war streets. Um, so this is on the edge of the war streets immediately to the, uh, right in this um, aerial or to the east is commonplace coffee, uh, which some people might be familiar with. Immediately to the west, to the left is a Dollar General, uh, which is on, um, actually, I'm blinking. It's not Federal Street. Anyway, we'll keep going.
So did you say that the board had previously issued an approval for a change of a non-conforming use, but that's expired?
I believe the approval was for a, uh, not a, whether it was a change of a non-conforming use or certification, there's no certificate of occupancy. So I think that more precisely it was, um, the non-conforming use itself.
Okay. Now, the, what I was curious about is if, if we had previously looked at it and some time passed, then we'd go back to it. But what is, um, is the configuration currently, uh, some sort of storefront use with a residential unit upstairs? Or are you, is the residential unit new? I mean, or is just the use on the street level new?
Neither one is new. Uh, if we go to the next slide. So here's the existing condition. Um, the, the first floor commercial space, and we have floor plans too, we'll get into that just briefly. Uh, the first floor commercial space has been vacant for quite some time, but most recently it was used as an office space. The dwelling unit is on the second and third stories. And that has been occupied, um, you know, continuously. Uh, next slide. Just site plan for context, we're a hundred percent lot coverage. This is an existing building. Um, I, I do want to point out a few changes. Uh, we're going to be removing the residential entrance to Cameo Way. Uh, we have, oh, I apologize, they're not labeled, two AC condensers, and you'll see those in other views, uh, along Cameo Way that we are proposing. Those are encroaching into the public right of way as they're proposed, and we'll talk about those a little bit as well. And, uh, yeah, next slide. First floor plan, this is the proposed just office space, pretty simple, pretty basic fit out and stairs going up to the upper stories and down to the first story, and the commercial entrance will be on Jacksonia. Uh, next slide. Second floor plan, this is simple dwelling unit. Um, there is a rooftop deck uh, on the right-hand side of this drawing, and, and you'll see that again from other views, and that's an existing condition as well.
Well, okay, let's, let's go back for a second. Um, I heard you say both office space and commercial space for the first floor. Is it office space or is it retail? Is it a combination of both? What is the proposed use for the first floor?
Yes, absolutely. The proposed use specifically is office space, and we're going to address, well, anyways, we'll, we'll talk about that in a little more depth.
Well, I, I asked about it now, so could we talk about it now? Um, I, I mean, if you have a slide that's going forward, that's fine, but is it an office for one person, for two people? I mean, it, again, that's what we're trying to assess of is this a change from an office space to an office space? Is it a change from a commercial space to an office space? I, I was getting confused.
Sure, we can go back, uh, one slide. Yeah, so we have this shown with five desks and a kind of a meeting table. Um, you know, the space is less than, excuse me, less than nine hundred square feet under standard occupancy, you know, densities, that would be six occupants, which is what we're reflecting here.
Okay.
Um, as I said, the space has been vacant for quite some time, but its most recent use was office space, and we'll provide some historic documentation about, um, uses that extend prior to the zoning.
Okay. And you, but you don't have any way, you say it's been vacant for some time. Do you have a last date of occupancy?
I apologize. I don't have that.
Okay.
This is, I, and with regards to abandonment, I will say that ever since this building was purchased by the owners of approximately a decade ago, they've been trying to make, uh, occupancy of the space work. But the economics and, and the market, um, are challenging. You know, there's a lot of investment required to bring this.
Yeah, I wasn't, I, 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 I wasn't raising a question of abandonment. I was just raising a question of how long, for, for the neighborhood's sake, how long has that just been a vacant space? And if you don't know, you don't know. That's, that's fine.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, let's go for two slides, Daniel. And just to cover, there, there's a third story. It's an attic. It's not a full story. And that's where the sleeping room is, and then another slide. So I think this view is helpful. We've got on the left, the Cameo Way facade, and on the right, the Jacksonia facade. Um, I wanted to highlight the AC condensers are shown in both of these views. They're proposed to be elevated above the ground level. Cameo Way is pretty narrow. The, the building has been, um, uh, struck by vehicles, scraped by vehicles, maybe is more accurate. Um, so we're placing, proposing the AC condensers well above grade. I want to talk about.
I was gonna say, the, the, um, the only thing that's on our agenda is the change of the non-conforming use. So are there variances or setback issues for any of the, um, AC units or anything else that we should also be looking at?
Yes, so, um, I want to talk about AC units just briefly right now. So there are two. And I'll, I'll just explain the setback to the board. So we're applying for an encroachment for the AC units. I, I don't believe, you know, and, and, um, Domi has indicated that this is a standard encroachment, that they have no particular issue, not that it's been approved in any means. Um, I don't believe that there is any relief required from the board with regards to the placement of the AC units as proposed, but if I'm incorrect, I'd be glad to be corrected here.
Well, I was gonna say, it's not on our agenda, which leads me to believe that, um, staff doesn't think there's an issue that the board has to review. So it may be a, a doming encroachment issue, but if it's not a setback variance, then we, we needn't spend a whole lot of time on the AC units.
Well, I do want to bring up, and this hasn't been flagged by staff yet because we haven't made the mechanical implication. There will be a small, um, residential compatibility sound standards at the adjoining property to the north is a residentially zoned property. Um, so residential compatibility comes into play, and the noise level from our AC condensers is fifty-two decibels at that property line. I want to just real quickly address why, uh, this AC condenser placement, and the, the nighttime standard is forty-five decibels for reference in the residential compatibility. So we're in excess of that, and I want to briefly address why we're placing the condensers here, and that, why that requires the smallest relief possible. So of course, with being a hundred percent lot coverage, um, there's not a lot of good places to condenser. We certainly can't put him on the ground. Um, if we place the condensers on the Jacksonia front of the building, that would have a lower sound level at the adjoining residential property. But there would be an issue with historic review. Historic review is going to object to placing the condensers in the primary facade, so that's not a viable option. We could also place the condensers on that second story rooftop deck, but that would actually present a higher sound level to the adjoining property owners. Um, so those are kind of our three options, and the one that we're proposing requires the least relief.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that explanation. Um, and then, so that it, has the residential unit been in use? I mean, I, I know you said that the office space had been unused for some time. Is the, has the residential unit been similarly in, unused?
The residential unit is currently occupied. If there was a period of time, we're not aware of any period of time when it was.
No, that's, I was just curious, is that the, 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 the building hasn't been entirely vacant. It's the first floor space, but the apartment has, has the, has there been an AC unit for that apartment space?
No, it's not currently filled.
Okay, all right. Um.
Next slide.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is just a nineteen forty-two Sanborn map. Um, I'm showing the whole thing, and then we can go to the next slide and provide a little content. So I'm overlaying the, um, rendering, because these can kind of be a little hard to read. So starting from left to right, um, you've got the way, then you've got the two, Sanborn's going to call it two stories because the upper story is not a full story, so they have the little two, and they have an S there for, for shop. And then the one-story portion, you see the little one and an S next to that, is actually indicated as a separate, um, retail space. So historically, there were two retail spaces in the first floor, and it's standard for Sanborn to not necessarily note upper story residential occupancies.
And, and drugs on the corner, so there you go.
Yep. Now we have a different drug, caffeine. So, um, just real briefly, and I, I don't know if the, the board will, will do this. We are going, uh, you know, we're proposing to occupy as office, but um, we are looking for a tenant who might use the space more fully, so the, the space is, is out for lease as well, or it's not actually at for lease yet, but it will be. And I don't know if the board would be open, but Restaurant Limited and Retail are similar occupancies with similar intensity of use. And if the board would be willing to include approvals for those uses, we love that. We understand and have your own discretion.
I, I was gonna say, I, I think there's a significant difference between, um, restaurant and office. Um, but you, you said it's only usable for an occupancy of six?
Yeah, and, and if you had like a takeout restaurant, I, I mean, there's just, it's lots.
Well, and that, then you're getting into a whole different category, which is takeout restaurant as opposed to a restaurant. So I, I'm, I'm not sure that, we'll, we'll take a look at it, but I, I would be, uh, if, if there's another use that is possible, then I think you, you might have to come back and explain, like, again, the, 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 the impacts of that kind of use, I think, would be different than what you're explaining to us today.
Sure. We do understand small scale of the building, um, is, is our primary consideration, but we do appreciate your discretion there.
Okay.
And that's all.
All right. Um, I don't have any other questions. Mr. Richardson, any other questions for the applicant?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Burton-Pulk?
No, there's no questions.
I'm sure you would have told me if there were questions. Um, all right, we will, uh, accept the exhibits as part of the record, and we will, um, issue our decision within the time permitted on code. It's maybe for Christmas, who knows? We'll see, but we have forty-five days to issue a decision. So thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you. Have a great day.
All right. Um, I am going to note for the record that the next case of the morning, zone case one forty-nine of twenty twenty-five for thirteen sixteen Juniata Street has been rescheduled, and we don't have a date yet. So if anybody's interested in that, that will have to be reposted so that we have an actual date for that. But, um, because we're not having that hearing, we're going to go off the record. And then just in case anybody is here for the nine twenty case for seventy-five Hopper Place, um, that is also going to be rescheduled until February fifth. Um, so we will not be back on the record until nine thirty. We'll put up a little sign that says we'll be back shortly. Thank you. I'll say something about the last hearing. Ready? Okay. So hello again, everybody. We had a little bit of a break there because we had two hearings that were rescheduled. The hearing at nine twenty for seventy five Hopper Place has been rescheduled to February fifth, if anybody was interested in that one. But now we're going to resume with the regularly scheduled program. The next case of the morning is Stone Case one fifty seven of twenty twenty five for three forty North Aiken Avenue. And we have Jamal Saliman and Sergey Matvayev. Sergey and Jamal, are you with us?
I'm here. I just I'm keeping myself muted because there's an orientation going on behind me. I have a college visit with my daughter.
Oh, dear. Okay.
She's doing orientation today.
Well, she should go to Indiana. No, just kidding. So is Sergey with us?
He's here. Good morning.
Okay. So I'm just gonna ask if each of you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is case one fifty seven of twenty twenty five for three forty North Aiken Avenue. The application is for the use of an existing building for a convenience store, and they're requesting a special exception pursuant to section nine twenty one dot O two dot eight dot four to allow the change of nonconforming use from a tailor shop to a convenience store.
All right. And we have your materials. Just just to preview this a little bit, the the convenience store has been operating, but it hasn't had a certificate of occupancy since the tailor shop use. Is that sort of where we are?
That's correct.
And Sergey, I'm sorry, could you give your name and spelling for the court reporter, please?
Sure. My name is Sergey Matvayev, S E R G E I, last name spelled M A T V E I E V. I'm a little long.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's correct. So the the market has been in operation for quite some time. The background on this is that there was a ZBA case back when Jamal purchased the property. I think it was two thousand seven or two thousand eight, somewhere in about that time. I think what happened is is that Jamal didn't quite know all the ins and outs of what needed to be done, as many people don't, because it's a complicated process. And when you're new to it, it's it's it is it can be a little bit unwieldy for somebody that's not familiar. And what happened, I think, was this was approved back in two thousand eight, but the paperwork, which was required for completion of the process, which is basically going through P L I and getting a certificate of occupancy inspections and making sure that everything is. That wasn't done. So in the in the meantime, that ZBA approval has expired. And so we're back here again.
Okay, so it it approved, but it's the it was the P L I piece, the actual issuance of a certificate of occupancy that was the problem.
I believe so. I mean, Jamal would have to testify to that. I was not involved with the project back then, but that's what's been communicated to me, yes.
And and so have you seen the prior board approval?
Not. We've had some communications with zoning, with Corey Layman and with the inspector over at P L I, who has who brought an enforcement case against us for not having a certificate of occupancy. I believe some sort of documentation, but not the actual approval, so.
And 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 we can look it up. The the reason I was curious was whether in allowing the change of a nonconforming use, if there had been any conditions associated with it that we should be aware of. So but let's go back. So the I I'm looking at the location map on North Aiken, which is sort of going up the hill, right, towards Highland Park-ish, Morningside?
I guess that's about right. Yeah, but towards Morningside, I think that's right.
Okay. And and so you said that it's been operating as a convenience store for since two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Are there parking spaces available? I mean, what are the impacts? Oh, there we go. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, all the building itself has a very small footprint relative to the lot. It's about a thousand square feet. The building, which qualifies, or as far as I can tell from reading the zoning code, is that it qualifies as a grocery store limited that's under three thousand square feet. They did this for the property according to the zoning code, no parking is required based on the very diminutive size of the building. However, just because of the way the lot is, people do pull up there. There is, technically speaking, no parking, but people do what they do.
Got it. Okay. And just for maybe this is for Jamal, but the in seeking a a certificate of occupancy now, do you intend to change any of the current operations? I mean, changing the hours or anything like that? Is this a twenty four seven or are there different hours or the days that the store is closed?
The store is open daily from eight AM to ten PM and it's usually one employee, two shifts throughout the day. And that's the way they've been operating. And my understanding from Jamal is that there is no plans to change anything. Because I believe he's sort of in a conference, so I'm briefed on what on the store's operation. So but if you want him to testify, please let me know.
Well, I I have to say only I I'm not enforcement, but I have a little bit of a concern about the signage for a use that is not the convenience store on the side of the building. And I don't know if that's a painted wall sign or another kind of banner sign, but that technically, I don't think that's allowed, but
I'm sorry.
Other than I it could you describe a little bit about what's is that the the red brick portion, is that a alley or is that a different another street? What 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 is that?
That's actually Hillcrest Street.
Okay. And what's across Hills Crest from from the market?
There's an aerial photo. It's it's residential. It's all it's all, I think it's townhouses. If you go to the others, let's see which slide is it?
I think we approved.
Four? Or three? Four, that's four. I'm sorry, four. There you go.
Yep.
Across Hillcrest, and you can see Hillcrest, the red brick paving. And then Cattie Corner from the property is another residential. It's all residential in the neighborhood. This building's basically been here since nineteen sixty two and has operated since, as far as I understand, as a commercial structure. In all that time, nothing's ever really, it's never been anything other than a commercial structure.
And it's an R two district. It's not R one. So the mix, the townhouses and everything else are sort of reflective of that. Okay. And again, was there an opportunity to? I'm sure there was a posted notice in front of the property, but were there any discussions with any of the neighbors about why you were doing this or any concerns expressed with how the use has been operating?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of any neighbors having, I mean, I went to the property several times and surveyed. What I observed is that it seems to be a convenience to the neighborhood that is welcome, that all the patrons coming in all seem to know the the employee that was on shift. So I mean, what I witnessed was nothing but very cordial interactions and they seem to be pretty welcome in the neighborhood. But I I'm not, we did post, obviously. If anybody has appeared in opposition, Daniel didn't let me know of any community groups that need to be discussed. Usually that happens if there's a community group that needs to be brought into the discussion.
If 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 we have people showing up here, we'll 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 look to make sure that if anybody wants to be heard, we'll we'll make sure that they'll have an opportunity. All right. Were there other photos or other information that you would like the board to review?
Well, I mean, if you go through the the slide present, there's there's the certificate of occupancy from nineteen sixty two showing a paint dry cleaning tailor shop. The next slide is a bit of a timeline, which lets you know that Jamal purchased this, actually, as far as I understand from the city. And the the there was a gentleman from the finance department that I believe helped Jamal navigate getting this into zoning, getting into zoning to make sure that it was going to be approvable back when he purchased it. So that was all done. But of course, you know, like we discussed already, something something went off the tracks and the enforcement case was brought about in twenty twenty five. I was brought into the discussion late summer, early early fall and started talking to the zoning department and P L I and getting drawings together. And obviously, we're here today. Go to the next slide. There's the the various section that we're.
Oh, we 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 know that one, believe it or not. So, okay.
Then there's the and all the zoning and and P L I code information is on on there, which also does it also spells out the hours of operation and the employees and the parking and everything else. So if you want to refer to that, I really don't have anything else to. want to refer to that, I really don't have anything else to um um to present or just unless you have.
Well, I was gonna say, I'm gonna try. I I thank you for the um good combination of exhibits so that we understand what's going on and we will accept all of the exhibits as part of the record. Um, Mr. Richardson, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Burton Falk?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
And do we have anybody who is attending who would like to comment with respect to the application for three forty North Aiken Avenue?
Hey, this is the court reporter. I just need Jamal's last name, please. Could you spell your last name, sir?
Yes, it's Suliman. S as in Sam, U L, A I, M as in Mary, A, N as in Nancy, Suliman.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, but we don't, we're not seeing anybody else with a hand raised who's interested in participating. All right. So we will close the hearing. We'll accept the exhibits as part of the record and we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code. Thank you very much for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and just for people who've come in, um if you want to have a conversation, please have it outside just because it gets confusing for us. So uh we have uh the next hearing of the morning is um zone case one fifty-nine of twenty twenty-five for Borland Street with John Porter. Mr. Porter, are you with us?
I am. How's it going?
Mr. Porter, are you the only person who's going to be testifying in this matter this morning?
I am, yeah.
All right. And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Shepke, could you read the case in, please?
This is case one fifty-nine of twenty twenty-five for Borland Street. The application is for a house and they're requesting a variance from section nine oh three dot oh three dot C. A three-foot interior side setback is required and one foot is requested.
All right, Mr. Porter, I believe we've seen this uh uh property before. So can you can you explain how you've revised the plan for the site?
Absolutely. Yeah. So Daniel, um if you just to show, we have the posters there on that first slide. Um, and then one of the comments that was brought up previously is reaching out to the owners. Um, so with the posters obviously being shared, the current owner of the lot also reached out to the adjacent owner. Um, and he owns both of the lots left and right of the property. Um, there's a letter here that shows that it was he was reached out to. Um, to my knowledge, no letter has ever been stated back to Andrew, the the current owner. Um, so there was nothing further that was done with that, but that was mailed out on ten twenty-seven. Um, and then if you want to go down, Daniel, you can um go to the site plan, please. Um, so what we did and and part of the conversation before was having zero feet on both sides. Uh, we did request uh one foot side setback on the the northern side to ask for a little bit of relief there. Um, part of that is um trying to match the conditions that are in that neighborhood. So many of the the properties that we've talked about in the past have zero-foot side yard setbacks on both sides. Uh, but we feel that one foot is is still um, you know, holding it away from the neighbor's property and the roof line and then also fitting into the context of what's there currently. And then.
So it just let me wrap my little head around this. So it would be zero on one side and one foot on the other?
That's correct.
So you're basically going from zero on both sides to one on one side?
That's correct, yeah.
All right. And um the basis for supporting that request, I mean, that's it. Again, I think we were skeptical about the um original proposal. How how is this improving the condition?
Yeah. So if you if you go down to the elevations, Daniel, we can talk through this a little bit too. Um, so what we did and it it um, one of the comments was also having two stories and three stories houses in that neighborhood. Um, so we were originally proposing a three-story home. So what we've done is, as part of the re- reduced side yard setback, we've also reduced the overall footprint of how that house feels on that street. So it reads as a two-story house, but in the rear of the home, it's only just a half a story. And many of the other homes on that street are three stories, but in the context of where this house would fit out in that that street itself, they're all two stories with a roof line or a gable roof um that reads as a three-story home. So we were trying to bring down the house in in the context of how it is and just so it doesn't tower over everything that's around it. So by requesting that one foot additional setback and then reducing the roof line to make it fit in the context more, I feel like that addressed some of the concerns that the board had.
Okay, I I had forgotten about the height issue and the I
Mm-hmm.
As I recall, it was it was it was maxing out the height, but would have been much higher than the um structures on either side.
That's correct. Yeah, I don't believe, I don't remember if it was fully of the forty feet. I know it was three stories. I think it was like thirty-eight something um to the top of the ridge, but.
It was close enough to forty.
Yeah, it was a lot. It was a lot for sure. I agree with you. Um, so that was that was the goal. So we were just trying to take the context into more consideration and and by bringing it down, I I feel like we've worked with that a little bit better. Um, so it fits in closer to what it was.
All right. And the is is the intent for the uh design of it to sort of, it's not going to be the sore thumb that um sticks out between the existing structures on that street?
I mean, it it's gonna stick out. Don't get me wrong, um because the homes that are there are, you know, from the sixties or so, whenever they were last touched. Um, so and certainly it's a different design than what it is, but if you look at across the street, there's a home that's identical to this. It's it's dark gray siding with a black roof and a gable and uh gable roof end onto it. You know, so there is other homes in the area. It's that's literally directly across the street that have been touched within the last five years. And it's the one that's next to it is very modern. Looking, it's a really nice design. So that was the approach that we took is try to do something that's very similar to what's what's there and also not, you know, put a McMansion there type thing, you know, so we were trying to fit into the context of what's on that street now more than we were before.
Do you have a rendering of what you're proposing in the context of what's there?
I don't have an actual rendering, but Daniel, if you go up, you can see the street a little bit further. Um, so that's that's the home right there uh to the left and right of where the that house would fit into where the grass is, is the proposed lot.
Yeah. But you you don't have anything of what you were referring to across the street?
Unfortunately, not in the slide. I should have presented one, but um on the bottom left image where that sidewalk and grass is, it's literally that lot right there that I'm talking about.
Yeah, no, I I was
Yeah.
Curious about more context, but.
Yeah.
All right, we will take a look at the revised plan. I don't have any other questions, Ms. Burton Falk.
Questions, Madam Chair.
Mr. Richardson?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anybody attending who would like to comment with respect to this application? Any hands raised?
Uh, no hands are raised um online.
Okay. All right. And I'm assuming nobody in the room is here for Borland Street. Your next quiz is where is Borland Street? All right.
It's an east loop.
I I I know. I'm 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 asking the people in the room, Mr. Porter. I I know where it is.
Okay, sorry.
No worries. Okay.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, thank you. We will accept the exhibits as part of the record and we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, the next case of the morning is zone case one sixty-one of twenty twenty-five for three twenty-nine thirty-seventh Street. The applicant is Anthony Mosby. Is that right? Do we have the applicant for thirty-seventh Street?
Yes, he was just promoted to panelist.
Okay. I don't have full functionality on this. I don't care. It doesn't matter. I can see the exhibits, but I can't see the people.
All right, that should be good. Can you guys hear me now?
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Couple of clicks, but I am here.
All right, uh, Mr. Mosley, are are you the only um person who's attending in support of this application?
I have my contractor here as well, um Alex, and I know that he was trying to come off mute. I believe he's.
Oh, okay. He has to be promoted as a panelist. So all we have is a last name. So, okay, I mean, a first name. All right. So uh to start with, I just want to um ask if each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Shepke, could you read the case in, please?
This is zone case one sixty-one of twenty twenty-five for three twenty-nine thirty-seventh Street. The application is for a deck and they're requesting a variance from section nine oh three dot oh three dot D dot two. A five-foot interior side setback is required and zero foot is requested for the deck.
All right. So is it uh Mr. Mosby, are you leading the um presentation here?
Uh, yeah, but Alex can, Alex will support as well.
Okay, well, for the court reporter's benefit.
Yes. I I didn't mean.
Well,
Oh.
she needs to know who's talking. So if you're going to hand off between each other, then make sure you identify yourself for the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So we have your materials up. Could you explain what it is that you're proposing to do?
Yes. And so uh I I guess the context here is that um my brother and I purchased a home in Lawrenceville uh to do some renovations. It was from a fam- a family member of his wife. And uh we made uh some interior and exterior renovations. One of the renovations that we did not realize and asked for kind of the city planning commission's mercy on is that because there was a deck there historically, we thought.
We're we're I I just clarify, we're not the planning commission. We're the zoning board. That's okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Uh, there was a deck there. Historically, we did not realize that we couldn't just replace it and that we needed permission. And so you'll see here uh it's some context as to wh- wh- what the situation is. Um the the real challenge is that narrow lots were an in-unit, and so a five-foot setback would be really challenging, but we believe that uh because one, we are replacing what historically had been there and also uh we don't believe that there's any um challenges or kind of interference with the neighbor on one side that we're requesting kind of a uh permission to do it.
Well, I I guess the question is, um, when you said you replaced something that had been there, is it an is it an exact replacement or is it something larger than what had been there?
So it is larger, but the deck was, when we purchased the property, the deck had already been removed. The only thing that still existed was a door. Um, but because we knew the family that owned the home before, we had seen pictures of that that they had that. And so that's kind of how we ended up and and kind of work with our contractor.
I I'm I'm not sure that you answered my question.
Okay.
Is this the new deck larger than what had been there before?
I go out.
Uh, so yeah, um Alex speaking here. So the deck.
Alex, Alex, can you give us your last name, please, for the court reporter?
Kushnirenko, K U S H N I R E N K O.
Okay, so how much? I'm I'm guessing that the new deck is larger than the old deck, but I'd like to know by how much.
So it's larger coming into the property, like back of the property, but it's not wider, like it's not closer to the neighbor's property. It's just, you know, farther into our backyard, if that makes sense.
Well, but for for as long as it is, it's still closer to the property line than is permitted.
Yeah, well, I'm I think they were saying that they want five feet, but the house itself is like sixteen feet or something, so.
Yeah, but there's there's there are different rules for decks, which are accessory structures than for primary structures, which would be the house. And decks, a five-foot setback is required for the deck. So um was the previous deck built to the property line for a certain length down into the backyard?
Yes, um, you could you can even see how the old ledger board was, how it was going to the edge of the house, um how it is now. We actually, the new deck, we actually moved it, I would say, around a foot away. Like, it doesn't go to the edge of our house. It's like a foot away, you know, closer into our um property. So we don't, you know, so that way we don't interfere with the neighbor at all.
I I was gonna say, we're we're um, okay, there we have a picture. That's.
I was gonna say that might help. This is Anthony talking.
So but so you're extending to the property line on what is the right side of this picture, but you have a little bit of a setback on the left side?
Well, we have a setback. This is Alex. We have a setback on the right and the left. Like, same, pretty much. We don't, we don't have, you know, get going like past the edge of our house. We actually have it even setback inside around a foot.
Okay, but it's required to be five foot, so.
Yeah, but.
Correct.
Okay. And um as compared to what had been there before, how how much of this deck is new? I mean, how how much farther into the backyard does the new deck go?
Uh, this is Alex. I would say roughly looking at the old posts, like the old posts over there, we're probably around five feet back more into the backyard than it used to be. But if you look, you know, if you look at that picture, if you imagine cutting that deck five foot, you know, for for the setback, you really don't get much of a deck there anymore.
Well, that's that's sort of the point, um that accessory structures have to comply with uh different setback requirements. So um, just because it's not as big a deck as you might want, doesn't mean that it's, you know, that you get to have the biggest deck that you want.
Yeah, 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 I know what you mean.
Okay. Do what what are the dimensions of the um new deck?
Um, honestly, I don't have the measurements in front of me.
If you go to slot, if you go up one, I think that lays out the dimensions of you. Yeah, right there to the right. That's the.
Okay, I can't read that from this, but that's okay.
I can do it six. Hmm, I'm not good at reading these guys. Um.
It's it's ten foot nine by sixteen six in the in the so so there's like, you you can see how the way the deck is. There's like a hallway going up to the deck. So with the hallways around sixteen six and then ten foot, looks like four or ten foot nine wide.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and so your basic request is we want to have the deck as we built it, even though we built it without getting any kind of approvals. Um, is there, again, hey, was this something that you had talked about with the immediate neighbors before you um started construction on it?
No, not really. Um, you know, uh, we haven't really talked to them. We just kind of stayed on our property and just built it and then um that's kind of how we did. Then then we were told that we need to get permission. So we we actually, you know, went and got permission, pulled a permit for it, and here we are in the process.
Well, you didn't get full permission if you're here, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, we're working on it. Yep. This is.
But it I again, you're in the position of asking for forgiveness instead of for the permission that you had you were supposed to ask for. Okay.
Correct.
And this is Anthony talking. Uh, and that is the one reason I kind of set it up the way I did is because I had the historical context that Alex and I, when we were talking about it, thought we were replacing and not creating new. And I know when I say replacing, that doesn't mean tear it down and build the exact same thing, but because it had existed, there had been a deck there before. I I erred, made an error and thought that we could put something back up. And so that's kind of how we landed.
If you if you had put something back up in the same footprint as before, there might have been less of a question, but when you extended it, um, that's that's what created the problem. All right. Okay, um is there any, are there any other materials that you would like us to look at?
No, I I think this all, your kind of questions and Alex supporting the conversation really got at us kind of stating our case for why we're asking uh for this uh for this for this request uh and allow this modification. Um, there's just some, I tried to tie in some of the questions or way you guys make decisions to try to lay out what I thought was um a fair way to explain why we kind of did it this way. Um, but that that I think that's it, unless you all have any more questions.
Well, we don't, but I I don't. Um, Mr. Richardson, any other questions?
No questions. Thank you.
No additional questions.
All right, but we we do um if is there anybody attending this morning who would like to comment with respect to the application for thirty-seventh Street? Raise your hand and we'll call on you. Okay. Anybody attending who would like to comment with respect to thirty-seventh Street? All right. Seeing no hands raised, um we will accept the exhibits as part of the record and issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
I think you all think you. I thank you all. Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's see, oh dear, this. The next, I'm just checking my time here. It's past 10. All right, the next case of the morning is Zone Case 160 of 2025 for 201 South Pacific Avenue. And as I understand it, we have a request from the, is it Bloomfield Community Group?
Friendship Community Group.
It's Friendship, okay, sorry, that was going to request a continuance of the hearing?
Yeah, and we have a representative from that group online. I think they're identified as Devin.
Devin?
Yes, this is me. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. And just for the applicant's benefit, there's, when a community group requests a continuance, the board routinely grants that request for one hearing, one hearing only. You don't get to keep continuing. Devin, can you explain the basis for a request for a continuance from the Friendship Community Group?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much. So the Friendship Community Group, we're a nonprofit civic organization and a registered community organization for the Friendship Neighborhood, which includes this property 201 South Pacific Ave. We're requesting that the Zoning Board of Adjustment postpone the hearing for Zone Case 160 of 2025 from today, December 11th, 2025, to a future date for these reasons. One, the applicants have not contacted either nearby neighbors or the FCG Friendship Community Group to explain and discuss this application and their proposed use of this property. Continuance will allow time to, for such discussions to take place in advance of the hearing. And two, the Friendship Community Group has retained an attorney to represent the group in this matter. She is unable to attend this hearing. A continuance will permit her to attend a rescheduled meeting. But as always, FCG thanks the zoning board for your service to the community.
Well, Devin, just again, for the record, could you give the court reporter your last name?
Yes, my last name is Chadson, C-H-O-D-Z-I-N.
Thank you. And then do we have, and again, this is awkward to do by Zoom, but for the applicant, is that Shawna Mahalik?
Yes, ma'am, it's pronounced Mahalik.
Okay, sorry, I get mispronunciations all the time.
No, no, that's okay. Everybody kind of butchers it.
So, me too, but it's, so if you understood, the Friendship Community Group would like the opportunity to talk with you.
I understand that, but they have already taken me to the magistrate, so I feel that this is in the court's hands now.
Well, that, again, from the zoning board's perspective, communication with the.
I can't hear anything.
Sorry, communication with the registered community organization is helpful to the zoning board to fully understand what the issues are. So the magistrate's proceeding is different than the zoning proceeding and there are often opportunities to reach agreements and to, for them to understand what you're actually doing. So what I, and like I said, the reason we routinely grant continuances for the community group is because we, we know that it narrows down what we actually have to review. So we, we'd like you to take that opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
Come back after, and I would say, Devin, how, I know it's the holidays, but how expeditiously do you think you can organize a community discussion about this proposal? Because our preference would be to get it back on the agenda as quickly as possible for the applicant's benefit.
I believe we can be as expeditious as you need us to be. We can move forward really quickly.
Okay, and do you know how to reach out to the applicant to make sure you have that community meeting at a convenient time?
Uh, yes, FCG does know how to do that.
Okay, all right, we will look forward to seeing you soon and hope that you're able to resolve at least some of the questions that have arisen and we will hear them afresh when you come back. All right, all right, thank you. We're not conducting a hearing. We're not accepting exhibits on this matter. We're turning to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you again soon. It is 10:07. Our next hearing is scheduled for 10:10 and we will wait those additional three minutes and get everybody in the room. Oh, they were here for that one. Yeah, that's interesting. No, thank you. Daniel. I honestly, I thought they were here for the other one.
We are here.
Well, no, we have a, we had some people in the room and I was wondering why, if they were here for your hearing or for the preceding hearing, which didn't happen. And it's still only 10:08, so we're not going to start until 10:10 for the last hearing of the morning. We do have somebody in the room for this hearing as well. At least for ahead of time and not behind time. I would say that. Close enough to 10:10, and I think we have everybody here. It's my understanding that we have an individual in the room who is going to request a continuance of this matter. If you want to come up and make your request, we need to have you on mic so that the people on Zoom can hear you.
Yes, I would like to request a continuance.
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Nick Curazie, 517 Avery Street, Pittsburgh 15212.
Are you here on behalf of a community organization or as an individual?
Individual.
Well, I would say, Mr. Curazie, for the community organizations who are going to have some help to a, to the board in resolving issues, we're pretty generous about granting continuances, but if you're just here as an individual, and what is the basis for your request for a continuance, I guess?
My lawyer, Caroline Mitchell, has requested or suggested that we request a continuance. She has submitted a right-to-know request regarding any communication between Lockhart Tire Company and the city. And they expect not to get back with her to fulfill that request until January 16th, I believe.
And how does that affect the zoning issues before the board?
I really don't know. She's recommending that as a path to follow and I'm just, she knows more than I do about legal matters, so I'm just following her recommendation.
Well, and your attorney isn't here today?
No, her husband is in the hospital, so she is there.
For, would the applicant like to comment with respect to the request for a continuance?
Yes, the applicant would oppose the request.
Can you, can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sorry, my name is Leslie Peters. I'm an attorney with Bowles Rice. I represent the applicant Lockhart Tire. We would oppose the request for continuance. This matter's been set for this morning for.
The required amount of time the property was posted.
Yeah, we posted the property as required. Everyone's had notice of the date of this hearing and had time to prepare for it. We would like to move forward.
Well, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate that Mr. Curazie is at a disadvantage because his counsel's not here. Would you care to comment on the right-to-know law request or are you aware that that has been made?
Lockhart Tire was not aware that the request had been made. We don't understand what it relates to. We don't know what it relates to. We haven't seen a copy of it.
Okay. And again, I'm not sure that it has any relevance to what the zoning board would have to resolve, that it might create other challenges. I have to say, my inclination is to go forward with the hearing, but I think it could create procedural issues down the road if we do. So I think if, what is the, could we get this case on the agenda for the first week of January or the first hearings of January?
Yeah, we could do January 8th.
January 8th is the first, yeah, because I don't, and I apologize to the applicant, but I, I understand this matter has been pending for some time, but I don't want to create any other procedural questions, particularly if counsel's not available for the objector.
Question, question for the board, would it be acceptable to move forward this morning and leave the record open in the event that they need to supplement the record with some additional?
No, no, because, because the question would be one of cross-examination, Ms. Peters. And I don't think you can leave the record open for cross-examination. So, and again, I apologize, but I think that rather than create other procedural questions, we need to continue the hearing until January 8th. If there needs to be a different date, let us know, but I think we have to grant the request for a continuance. And again, I would relate to Ms. Mitchell. I'm not sure that a right-to-know law request, it might, not knowing what it is, I don't know how that would impact what the board has to review, but the board will hear the evidence that's presented and any cross-examination. But if there's another legal issue, that's, again, I can't even imagine what that might be. So we will, will continue the hearing until January 8th. If there is a change of date from that time, we'll figure out an exact time and communicate that to both you and to the applicant. All right?
Understood.
All right, apologize. All right, we're, so with that, we're done for the day. We're done for the year. See you all next year and thank you.